All right, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the Newtown Council meeting on October 22nd, 2018. If they can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Schlafer?
Mayor LaQua?
Here. All right. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official Wilton Board on January 8th, 2018. Everyone, we saw the minutes in their materials for the October 10th, 2018, regular meeting. To review comments, additions, deletions, amendments.
They'll be done before they're sent out.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I have a second motion.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn and a second by Councilman Diglio to approve the minutes of October 10th. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mayor LaQua?
Yes. At this portion of the meeting, we will open it to the public. The Town Council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Do we have anybody from the public at this time?
Ralph Porter, 12 Pine Street. I'd like to thank Tom Russo, the council, and the police department for helping us out with the problems on Pine Street parking and whatever efforts have been put forward seem to be working right now.
Okay.
So, thank you very much, my neighbors. Thank you too. And it seems to be working so far, so let's see how it goes. Thank you.
The day after last council meeting, I also received an email from one of your neighbors, so I know it's a concern for a few of you in the area. I'm glad we could respond before they leave.
Ms. Smith and Webber, that's the council on 17 Pine Street. I remember the supervisor of the postal office, like I told you, right there on Pine Street? The truck wasn't there, but she told me surprisingly herself, she said, "I don't know what's going on with the factory in a second because sometimes I gotta report two days because they lose people's mail." And I told her, I said, "Well, how far are they from here that it takes them even 10 days for regular or express mail?" And she says she'll still bring it up with the truck, but that she said in a second that that factory really needs a lot of work. Now, many times when I run my errands in this beautiful county, I know I see a lot of beautiful lands that says this for sale. I'm not saying that in a second it's, you know, affordable, but I'm sure by now because there's no sorting facility already in substance for any postal service, as there was this cover, because the one that even serves us, they told me was in Edison, Edison, New Jersey. They gave me the whole address, one town, Edison. But when you call the phone number to even inquire about this, it's like it doesn't take off, I say, maybe because it's a factory. But like I said, many times in the water supply sector, there's a lot of land that I'm sure by now, maybe they can consider to build a postal factory and all that problem would get solved. And, well, like I said, let's hope it gets solved. Now, in terms of the board of ed with the justice, I met with Dr. Green. He says it's still in process, that he still needed another meeting of that.
Okay.
But hopefully, most of the things will work out. The postal, like she said herself, they really need to get home, not delay people to medicine. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Tony and Lawler, 41 Condit Street. Recently, you adopted a new ordinance for the public parking on our street and has been no parking on our street, just on the other, it used to be two sides, now it's just one side. I've been a resident for almost 25 years. My property is basically the school is my backyard, football field, right there. There is absolutely no parking at all on, I guess it's the east side of the street, which is actually in front of my home. I find that that's a little harsh for our street. I can see during school hours, it's a problem, but for the rest of the time, it's really not a problem parking on our street. And I'm just wondering if it could be amended for school days that restrictions could be placed for parking. I don't know if there's something else that needs to be done. I don't know what else to say.
All right.
That's, my neighbors are in agreement with me on both sides of the, and they've been with me for 15 years or more and, you know...
Let me just ask, there was parking a lot on both sides of the street?
Yes.
And now you're only on the west side?
Correct. And, you know...
The west side has less driveways, right?
No, there's equal, there's equal driveways. Basically, it gets carried when there's parking really towards the springtime, when you have your juniors that are starting to drive with the seniors. That's the pattern generally, more drivers, so then they start parking on Condit Street because there's nowhere to park. Plainfield, they would park anywhere there's a spot to try and get because obviously we don't have parking in our town. But now you have football games. The team's doing well. We don't have parking for the residents to go and visit the game. So, I mean, really, it's just harsh, I think, for no parking at all on that side of the street here, not even just school days. School days, I can see that. It is hard, I will tell you, when it is both sides of the parking on the road to back out of your driveways. It could be a little hectic, but again, it's really not problematic. Like I said, I've been here almost 25 years, so if you could reconsider that.
Okay. Any other announcements? Okay. We will move on to council and manager reports. Deputy Mayor Flynn and I attended the planning board meeting last week. Pretty straightforward meeting where they took action also on some of the things that we had recently forward them as a council, but some part of their business. Thank you to Tom for his work over the last 10 days or so with regards to WizardCon coming up. I know that we have, we have the public and merchants and greater Newton-Tomaher Commerce requests put forth a lot of effort to come to a three-way agreement on WizardCon, so that's going to proceed. Also coming up on the 31st, on Halloween, is our annual parade and trunk-or-treat event. So, the parade starts at 5:00. The fire department will be helping out with that, as well as others with the trunk-and-treat event, so it's over...
Do you have locations for that?
So, the Halloween parade itself is going to be over in Central Plaza, as will the trunk-and-treat. And I think Councilman Diglio has a little more detail on that as well, but we'll be looking forward to that event. I'd like to congratulate Officer Kentits on his recent induction to the Newton High School Hall of Fame, as well as congratulations to the Newton First Aid Squad and Officers Morales and Post for their recent awards at the NJEMS Conference. November 6th is Election Day. November 9th is our next Coffee with a Cop event. And I know that a few of us also, on October 29th, will be attending the Great Places Awards Reception in South Orange, where the Town of Noon will be officially receiving the recognition for last week's announcement of Spring Street being awarded one of the great places in New Jersey. Congratulations to Tom and his award at Seton Hall and working with the Business School there and the marketing team on recent work on behalf of the Town of Noon. And finally, our thoughts and prayers are with all of the first responders currently working a huge fire in the town of Dover. It just came through there, and there's a huge response going on for a six-alarm-plus-fire. I know that we just sent a Reagan crew down to stand, to be standby in Mine Hill, as there are multiple, multiple counties responding currently to that emergency. So, our thoughts all with everyone that was responding there and to the people of Dover as well. And that's all I have at this point. Move on to Deputy Mayor Flynn.
I don't know if all that was you just wanted to bring up is more of a question for Tom about the Halsted parking issue. If there's any resolution on that, I know several people have brought that up.
No resolution, but the chief is working on it with the engineer.
Okay. I was unable to attend the League of Municipalities event due to some personal appointments, but Sandy was able to go instead and it was more difficult to figure out a lot of work, so good to hear that. And that's all I have.
All right, Councilman Diglio?
Okay. I'll start with October 17th. I called a special meeting of the Gradient Chamber of Commerce so that we could discuss WizardCon and we finalized all the details so that it could move forward. And I thank you, Tom, for working with us so closely on getting this done. On the 18th, I went to the Sussex County Chamber Council meeting, and basically, when we're at that meeting, we all discuss what's going on in our towns and our businesses, and then we discuss the events that are going on throughout the entire county. Then, later that day, I went to the Sussex County League of Municipalities, and the guest speaker was Steve, and I hope I say this right, Quamando. He gave an excellent presentation on anticipating the human response to disasters. What I learned and what I knew from working in EMS, or at least some of it, is that people react differently to different disasters. So, he was literally explaining the type of behavior that we should have as emergency responders to the individuals that are going through the disasters. It was very, very interesting, and he brought up a book called The Psychological First Aid, which I spoke to Tom about and asked if we could order it. And I also asked Tom if we could actually invite Steve here to do a presentation to the OEM, fire and EMS volunteers, and our own police, because the man was a wealth of knowledge. It was a very, very good presentation. As far as the Halloween parade, it will be on Halloween night, of course. People are encouraged to dress up. This year, for the first time, we will be having trunk-or-treat, and it's all going to be taking place across the street from the municipal building. We will be having the judging for all the regular categories, but in addition to the regular categories, we have added senior citizens, dogs, and hopefully, we'll have a whole lot more people coming. I'm planning on it anyway, so I'm hoping to see everybody dressed up and down there because I will be one of those dressed-up people judging.
And are we also, people, are there prizes for trunks being decorated?
Yes, there is. I forgot that. There will be a, there will be a prize for that, too. So, best dressed trunks.
Councilman Schlafer's not here this evening. Councilman Dixon?
All right. I'm gonna echo what everybody else said. I was happy to hear that WizardCon is gonna be a go. I'd like to thank Tom and for sitting down with Big Brother Sisters in the chamber and being able to work it out and look forward to the wonderful event. Board of Ed meeting on October 16th, each principal came and provided reports on the schools and their goals for the current school year. It was also noted that the high school recently had a college fair, and that some of the schools that typically don't travel to Sussex County, other than they noted Sparta, were in attendance. So, it seems like the word on Newton is getting out. That's really all I have for this evening.
Mr. Russo?
Yeah, as far as WizardCon, I appreciate the kind words, but I want to thank Erin and Becky from the Merchants Group, Tom Dust and Sandy from the Chamber, and Lori from Big Brothers, because everybody worked together to make it a reality, and everybody on the staff that helped provide input, along with the mayor and the deputy mayor and Ursula. So, it was a team effort, so I look forward to a successful event, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Tom, in response to Mrs. Lawler, do you recall, and I was just trying to bring it up, the changes on the parking for Condit Street had to do more with emergency response, safety, sightline, the request from some other homeowners to look at the parking situation, right? Am I remembering that right?
Yeah.
Do you have anything else to add?
No, because, you know, you solve one problem and you create an inconvenience for somebody else, so it's always that balancing act. If you want Harold and the chief to take a look at it, we can, but, you know, we followed your direction and the council's direction on it, and it's hard to...
And I feel that in my tenure between Ryerson and Condit and a few other streets, we, every couple of years, we are changing and modifying, trying to appease as many people as possible, and really, first and foremost, as a safety concern for the students and first responders.
And honestly, you know, we just implemented it, so part of me says we really should give it a chance to work or not work longer than a month or two and see how it, how it plays out before we start pulling the plug on something that we just implemented, but it's up to the council.
So, Mrs. Lawler, I just wanted to provide some context to, you know, the issues that you, that you raised, that part of the reason that those changes were made were actually in response to a few complaints from some of the neighbors there on Condit Street. And we did have the town engineer, as well as the police department, take a look at the parking situation, and those were the recommendations that came back, taking all of those, I guess, questions and queries into consideration. So, let's see what happens after a couple of months, and then we'll reevaluate if we need to.
Do you want to wrap this thing?
We have a second public, if you'd like. Okay. But I do want to address that. All right, so we're going to move on to ordinances. We have introduction of ordinance 2018-20, and ordinance amending Newton Town Code Section 100-19 regarding water and sewer connections. Do we have somebody that's going to introduce ordinance?
I will make a motion to introduce ordinance 2018-20.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Councilwoman Dixon to introduce ordinance 2018-20. Ms. Reed?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
No.
Mayor LaQua?
Yes. Ordinance 2018-21 and ordinance amending Section 320-2(c), permitted uses of the Newton Town Code to permit existing single-family detached and duplex residential as a permitted use in the SD3 zone. I have a motion to introduce.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2018-21. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to introduce by Councilwoman Dixon, a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mayor LaQua?
Yes. Okay, we have no old business. We will move on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Town Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its formal sequence on the agenda. Tom, can you run through those?
Sure. You have the annual appointment of Keith Mitchell for risk management. We have the fireworks display at Newton Medical Center, which is annual. We have the cancellation of an appropriation in Water Sewer Capital. We have a cancellation of grant receivable for Municipal Alliance. We have the insertion of the statewide insurance fund grant, Chapter 159. We have credits to Water Sewer. With the new sick leave law that Governor Murphy signed, we had to update our personnel policies to reflect the new law. We have the resolution requested by the council about the anti-Semitic graffiti that was on the home of the supporter of Congressman Gottheimer in Hampton Township. And Resolution 207 is bills and vouchers, and Deputy Mayor has a recusal on check 1320.
All right, so I believe that, I believe Resolution 205-2018 is a change that goes to effect allowing for, or, yes, allowing for sick time for even now part-time.
Well, we did have sick, we had sick leave for part-time, but it expands it even beyond what we originally had.
Correct.
So, that was gonna be my question. Do you have those figures?
Yeah. Well, what I know is that it's now state law for, for two and a half hours of sick time being granted for every 30 hours work and, worked. And what also expanded in the new law is how family is defined, and it's been expanded out. So, it's state law. Everybody has to be in compliance by October 28th, which is six months after the day that the bill was signed into law by the government, which is how that works. So, if anybody's wondering why it's such an odd day that it's starting, that's why.
Are they paid for the sick time if it's not used? For part-time employees?
Carries over. They can carry over.
Carries, or if they're seasonal? That's not a carryover situation?
No, but if they come back, they'll probably go in the bank, I would assume, you know, or...
If you're in six months, the law requires if you're re-employed within six months, when you're recruited, stays in the bank. And you can, you only have to allow a maximum, you're only allowed a maximum of 40 hours carryover each year.
That partially answered my question, but what if the employee just works one summer? Do they get paid for the time that they've accrued in that one summer and they never come back? Because that happens, are interns...
Yeah, we don't pay out for that.
If they're terminated, they get nothing that's left, as long as they don't come back to them that sixth month. On termination, they're not getting any recruitment.
Would it be considered termination?
It's a termination, end of employment.
End of employment. And thank you very much for the Resolution 20, 206-2018, that we all spoke about at the last meeting. Anybody need to pull any of the items off of the consent agenda?
I'm just gonna refuse on 200-2018.
Okay, that makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. All right, any other changes in consent agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to move the agenda?
I'll offer that motion.
I will second the motion.
All right. I have a motion on the consent agenda by Deputy Mayor Flynn, a second by Councilwoman Diglio. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mayor?
Refuse check, ready.
Mayor LaQua?
Yes, and Councilwoman Dixon is recusing 200-2018. Okay, thank you.
I do have your floor.
All right, we will not have an intermission at this time, so we'll move on to discussion, and we're pleased to have a presentation by our DPW crew tonight. So, you gentlemen want to come forward, please?
Just seeing during budget season, it's not...
Right.
Yeah, I see. We're just gonna, you know, have a brief presentation on both the daily operations and some of the projects between DPW and the water facility. For anybody who doesn't know me, NJpole, I oversee the DPW and the water and sewer. On my left is Adam Abou. He's the supervisor of the DPW. And on my right is Joe Carr. He's our licensed operator for the water sewer. So, pretty much, I mean, you guys see us on a daily basis. You see some of the work we do. So, what I'm gonna do is just give you a breakdown of what we have in both departments. Since we kind of combined now, since we have 18 total full-time employees, two part-time, and that's between DPW and water and sewer. On the DPW side, there's 11 full-timers, one part-timer. Four of our full-timers are completely cross-trained in both DPW and water and sewer work, and we're working on the water and sewer side. We have seven full-time. We have a, up at the water treatment plant, we have Jackson Wally. He's the attendant up there. And of course, we have our supporting staff, Debbie in our office, Jackie up at the finance, along with Dawn and Jenny. We work well with all of them. As far as DPW, just a breakdown on some of our infrastructure. The town, we cover 78 million miles of roads, okay? We have 487 catch basins that we try to take care of, probably a little over 40 miles of storm pipes throughout the town, five retention basins, three flood control dams. We have nine, you know, building complexes with parking lots. We take care of 17 sidewalks, four public parking lots, and then we have the park and ride. The parks, we have 38 acres of parks. We have Memory Park, Pine Street. We have, up at New Hampshire, on the street, there's a, what was a park at one time, it's more like a dog trail now, there. And then, of course, we have, just to focus here, Heritage Park over there. With those parks, we have four baseball fields, two softball fields, two soccer fields, a football field, basketball court, roller hockey rink. Between the parks, we have two playgrounds and a picnic area. We also take care of about 103 streetlights scattered throughout the town. Our equipment, right now, we have, for a DPW side, we have six pickup trucks, two mason dumps, two mid-sized dump trucks, three single axles, two tandems. We have a roll-off. We have a loader, two backhoes, a mini excavator. I know this has got a skin steer, two street sweepers, a hot box, crack sealer, two rollers, a paver, and of course, our 1949 Sikkert snow blower, which hopefully, we don't have to use this year. And of course, we have various underground for the lawn maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, plowing, and taking care of the sidewalks. As for...
Did you have that?
And while that, we're just gonna get to our ordinance for a side. Okay? As far as the water and sewer side, as far as the equipment, they have two pickup trucks, two utility trucks, a flusher slash vector. We have one roving camera. We have our light tower, our generator, air compressors, various parts and stuff that we use to kind of relieve and everything else like that. We have our GIS mobile 311, that's through a facility we, that we're all running at, which actually comes in pretty handy. We use it pretty much every week. We're always adding on to it and stuff. As far as water accounts, I believe Jackie gave me a figure of roughly 2,600 water accounts that we service. Infrastructure, of course, our water main, our Run for More Sleep and stuff, it dates all the way back to the 1890s, so it is pretty old. We have a 16-inch main and a 10-inch main that run into town, fossilize the leak. We have, we put a 20-inch main in there and replaced the main that was leaking with a 10-inch main. We have roughly 55 miles of water main around town underground. We have, they range from anywhere from 6-inch, I believe, to 16-inch. Okay? I can't give you a precise count on valves, but there's probably 300, 400 water valves around town for these mains. We have 400 fire hydrants. We have our high-speed pump station. We have our 2 million gallon storage tank. As far as sewer side, we have, of course, the sewer plant. What we have there is the, let's see, we have the trickling filter, the two primary fire fires, two secondary, eight RBCs, which we had two of them replaced last year, and they're, they're working well. The grid collector, which we're working on, we had an act replaced, the digester, the sludge tank, and of course, the lab equipment. As far as the infrastructure there, we have 25 miles of collection site, and then around town, which some of it is new, some of it is fairly old. Our famous 650 manholes, plus or minus, I think it's probably minus a little bit. And of course, Adam had to correct that one, and we have four pump stations throughout the town servicing those. So, that's pretty much a rundown on the equipment and the infrastructure and some of the employees. I mean, as far as services, on the DPW side, you've got a figure, we do recycling, we do that four times a month. There's four different grounds. We have a recycling center that's open two days a week. It's open on Thursday to 4:00. It's open on Saturday, 8:00 to 1:00. We have an attendant there, and of course, we come, we take care of getting rid of the dumpsters and stuff for the center. On average yearly, the town generates probably 145 tons of colored label, 125 tons of cardboard, and 75 tons of newspaper, along with just municipal lines, what we pick up on our properties. As far as garbage-wise, is we probably get rid of 180 tons of garbage for the town year. We do a brush pickup in May, a leaf pickup in October, a Christmas tree pickup in January that usually runs February. We get the occasional Charlie Brown Christmas tree in March or April, that somebody sets fire to. Weather permitting, we... Um, weather permitting, we street sweep as much as possible, we try to do the downtown area twice a week, usually that's Tuesdays and Fridays, that's usually between four and six AM, some things we got told we can't do anymore as far as that because we're waking up people. Um, we are required to sweep the entire town once a month, um, and then also at the same time, our winter cleanup at the end of winter usually takes, what do you think, Adam, about four to six weeks straight, and that's running both sweepers, um, all the time.
Both sweepers?
Both sweepers, yeah, because we'll get it done, people rake out, we'll get it done again, people rake out, we'll get that creepy snowstorm in April or something, and we think that everything is all done, but that's pretty much, that's full width of road.
How long does it take?
It takes about four to six weeks.
And that's doing the entire road that currently current, where usually each other is beautiful?
Yeah, on the regular. Um, and of course, along with the sweeping, before usually our cranes, our taste of new and things like that, we'll come out, we'll sweep beforehand, and then we'll clean up and sweep afterhand on, on those functions. Um, we naturally, being a public works department, we do a lot of road work, we repair potholes, uh, we do crack sealing, we'll, um, when we have water leaks, we'll patch and repair those water leaks, we'll do some of our own small paving, we have in the past, did small rooms this year, um, to try to make the road last a little bit longer, we did a skim coat on playing field with our, our paper and our old room stuff. Um, we'll do, of course, winter patching, we have our hot box, that comes in handy doing the winter, it's a little bit easier to, um, do potholes, uh, and across the crack sealing, that's, we'll do usually twice a year, we'll have it in May, and then a lot of times, we'll go back to it in, uh, September, we did about three and a half miles of crack sealing, um, this year with our crack seal, which might not seem like a lot, but it is a lot for a, a town our size, especially with the traffic on the roadways that we do. Um, we have repaired, um, twenty-two of the catch basins this year, which kinda has become an average for us right now, because our catch basins, but a lot of people don't realize, is they, we still have a lot of stone and red, red brick catch basins, so those require a lot of maintenance, and we still have about ten more that we're working on right now. Um, we replaced over three hundred feet of storm pipe, most of that was under the sidewalk at the high school, and, and along with that, we poured roughly a hundred and fifty-eight feet of side, sidewalk in aprons and about fifty feet of curb this year, which is a little more than average for us, but pretty much, we do a lot of con, of our own concrete work nowadays and stuff. We've done the, uh, bleachers, we've done a lot of pads down the garage, um, things for the water tanks pouring around the pool and stuff along with that. We also did the, um, patio around the facility and stuff up at the pool. Now, snow, our favorite time of year, we're coming to, everybody was talking about just before, which they work on for an inch on Saturday, temperatures have changed, uh, this is pretty much what we have to do with that. Right now, our, our storage shed is full, holds anywhere between a thousand and twelve hundred tons of salt, and we have two hundred tons of grit on hand. We probably average anywhere between eight hundred and a thousand tons a year, usually along with the brawn. Uh, last year, we actually produced and put down sixty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-four gallons of brawn on the roadway, which actually does help tremendously because it does help with, gives us a little more time on the roadways, um, and it also helps at the end of the storm for cleanup, it makes it a little bit easier to do that. Uh, along with that, we have five, uh, plow routes, two trucks on each route, um, we have nine parking lots that we, uh, take care of with two dedicated trucks in those, um, seventeen sidewalks, uh, and of course, we'll clear the center of town as we get at the end of, uh, the storms. The average route probably takes, I'd say, between four and five hours just for one time around. Usually most snowstorms, we do the wraps of these, we say probably three times, and then when the guys are done, usually the sidewalks, they're the toughest, uh, they'll go out and try and help them with that. We're hoping we purchased two pieces of equipment this year, and that we're hoping will help tremendously, um, on that and speed that, um, up a little bit.
What's that?
Um, we got two four-wheelers with plow attachments on them, so that way, these guys, they've been using snow blowers and shovels, and hopefully that, yeah, it takes time, these, I think they can keep on top of it a little bit, um, a little bit better than what they wanted to be able to do. Um, I mean, that's kind of it in a nutshell, we do have some stormwater responsibilities, we have, um, fire retention basins that we take care of, we keep them o, prepared in good shape, we have the three flood control dams, which, um, did have a major project to get done on, um, the Swartzwood Row one, they put another one of those concrete coffers underground for erosion, just in case they happen to come up, or they're going to spillway, they'll stop the erosion right at the concrete that's underground and keep that from evading the, the rest of the area.
Is that on the crest of that dam, or is that...
No, the crest of that dam, they raised, they had to raise that according to the D.P., I think it was about six inches in spots, when you come down on the far side, it drops down, okay? After that drop, on the, um, spillway area, it's ready now underneath on the very end of it. And so hopefully, we never get to see them, because then that means we have more rain than we've had this past year, which hopefully doesn't hurt. Uh, I mean, that's pretty much it on the DPW side, we pretty much, whatever we're asked to do, we'll do, um, try to do our best to save the town money, we're open to new ideas, we're open to, um, new projects, um, actually, the guys are very dedicated, they kinda enjoy the change and they enjoy what they're doing. Uh, as far as the water and sewer side, um, as I said, I went over some of the, uh, infrastructure, the equipment, all that, the day-to-day operations, um, let's see, on the water side, of course, you have the testing and sampling and the lab work that's done on every day according to the D.P. standards. These guys can get called out for markouts at, at any time, they usually have the bare minimum, what do you think, Joe, two, three a day on average, sometimes more because of our, um, three-one-one system also working with the eight-one-one system for the callouts, we're, we're able to, um, use their imagery and kinda cut down on our markup area, and just do strictly in the areas the mains were, used to be before that, we would get a markup, which is, if it's a general area, we would have to go out, so there are times where the markup would be nowhere near our working, so we'd either have to respond, um, on-site or in-kind at least, take a look, look it up and everything, try and find it ourselves, and see if there was any conflict or anything else like that. Now, we have it so we have our, our mains isolated, so it's cut down a lot on, um, unnecessary markouts. Naturally, we, um, do meter repairs, maintenance, um, replacements, anytime a resident, um, has a question about their meter, they think usage is too high or something, Jackie will give these guys a, a report, or they'll go out to the resident, look at their meter, look at the house, see if there's anything, reason why their, um, their usage might be, um, high, if they can't figure it out, the resident, um, requests it, they'll pull the meter and send the meter out for testing, and have it come back and, and see where that goes. They do a lot of fire hydrant maintenance, that's anything, you know, from replacing a whole fire hydrant to the inner workings of the fire hydrant. Naturally, we have the exercise and maintain the various valves around town, we have our quarterly meter reading, we flush two tons a year of hydrants, um, a few times a year, at minimum, we'll do leak detection right after flushing. Um, the flushing, um, sometimes you'll pick up on things afterwards, because while the guys are down, you know, hear something on a hydrant, which is usually the best way to tell if there's a leak out there. With the leak detection, and they started that program in...
Sixty-four, I don't know if you...
Yes, we actually, our uncounted water has gone down from thirty-five percent to just under fifteen percent, so it was quite the drop, and they actually probably saved a lot of water, um, and actually keeping that program going, our, our leaks have been a little bit fewer and far between, they're still there, but they're not as much and as drastic as they have been. Um, and of course, they'll deal with, um, you know, the public questions from the public, um, every day, they also, they help offset and help the DPW, um, with a lot of their work, uh, Dustin and Rick will, um, communicate back and forth, they set up schedules if they need our help, we need their help, and pretty much, that, uh, kinda goes pretty smoothly. As far as the sewer plant, I mean, of course, they, we have to do daily sampling, testing to comply with the D.P. standards, uh, we monitor pump stations, um, and if anything happens where there's any repairs that needs to be made, if we can handle it, we'll make the repairs, if not, we'll call on our, um, company to come out and make the repairs. There's daily sludge pumping, there, there's manhole inspections, we'll flush our sewer lines when we call out for emergencies on those, well, when they're checking the manholes and inspecting them, if they see anything that needs to be done to those, they'll take care of those. Of course, there's the, um, we have root maintenance where we have dukes come in, these guys will, um, take care of any roots and any problem, um, mains that we do find, we'll do inspections with our rover, if we do, get called out for a sewer line that possibly is clogged, what we try to do is send our camera down first, locate where the clog is, see if it's on our end or not, and then we'll send the, uh, flusher down. Um, of course, we'll do any kind of repairs that are necessary on the sewer mains, um, and then, uh, of course, you have your, your emergencies and stuff that we'll respond to and everything else like that. On both sides, these guys, they come out day, night, rain, gloom, the guys that see it on holidays, hurricanes, you know, you name it, we work well with all the other departments and, and stuff, and we pretty much are, you know, we react, that's what our job is, and we try to keep this hill functioning and we just try to do what's best. So, if you have any questions, if I just leave over the top, these two can answer.
I have no questions, but I do wanna thank the DPW workers, all of them, for an excellent job that they do, year in, year out, and yes, they're there, rain, snow, sweet hail, they're out there, thank you.
Yeah, it's a busy job, especially when you guys are running like fifteen, twenty hours on a snowstorm, so.
Yeah, and that's the other thing.
We appreciate it, us working folk who go to have to...
You guys, we always say, we're open, you guys can gladly come down any day of the week, you wanna come out for a lot on a snow, in a snowstorm, you wanna, it, it's boring, but it, it, you get to see what it, it is truly like, and that's before I came here, I learned to appreciate it, my first couple of snowstorms, I learned to hate snow, but I learned a lot about it, so, we're open, anytime you guys wanna visit, hey, the DPW for the water sewer plant, or the water treatment plant, just give us a call, come on down, just pop in.
Yeah, I, I wanna send my, uh, thanks and appreciation to the, um, DPW and the water sewer team, um, you know, we have a lot of institutional knowledge because we have a lot of ten-year longevity of a team, and I think that speaks volumes about, um, not only the work ethic that you guys have, but, um, I think the, the hard work and love and appreciation that you guys have for your jobs, I mean, a lot of you have been with the town for a many number of years, um, and it's a well, well machine, not to sound honey on that, but, um, I know, uh, just a couple months ago, Councilwoman Dixon and I were down at a meeting, um, at the water sewer plant, and, um, I, I think you had big eyes and a lot of respect, um, for not, uh, you know, you don't have a full appreciation for the, the daily work that happens down there, but, um, just the, uh, incredible equipment and machinery and the technical skills that you guys have, um, you know, I appreciate the fact that you have at least four people kinda cross-trained behind the scenes, um, to both departments, and you guys work obviously closely together, and, um, definitely have a can-do team work mentality because you're constantly supporting each other, you responding, um, we know that, uh, on those watering breaks, uh, those are long hours at all hours of the night, and that you appreciate brownies, right?
Yeah.
Roy, you're special.
Yeah, and, uh, I know that many of us, um, you know, try to get out, at least to see what the issue is, and you guys are really, um, great in taking the time, even in an emergency situation, um, take the time to explain to us kind of what's going on, um, what the work is that needs to be done, perhaps what caused the issue, um, you know, many of us have been kind of on the scene when the ground is open, um, to try to get a better working knowledge of, of what's going on on-site, and, um, you guys are really good in, in letting us know so that we can get appreciation when it comes time to budgeting, or, um, last month, for example, when, um, you know, our water and sewer engineers were out giving us, um, an explanation of kind of what's coming down the pipe and what we should know to budget for, and the jobs over the next kind of, um, one, two, five, ten year plans, so, uh, we appreciate certainly you guys, what you do on a day-to-day basis, um, but coming tonight and kinda giving us a good review. I know that Tom and his team are starting, and Dawn's starting to work on the budgeting process and having those meetings, so, you know, we appreciate everything that you guys are doing, and also appreciate your understanding of when we're looking at the budget, you know, looking at the timeline of, of how old the equipment is, how new the equipment is, what's the sense of urgency on what we replace next, and I know that, uh, you all provided a, um, work project schedule on some things that are going on, um, and have been going on over the last year, Council, you all received that in our, um, in our packets this week, uh, there's an outline there of, uh, the project name and then the work that's being done on a monthly basis and where we sit in October. Um, so do anybody have any questions for the team on any of those on-bone projects?
Um, I was just, I was reviewing it and I was looking at the rail trail, that you finally got the approval from, uh, JCPN, is that something that's gonna be pushed off till spring now, considering how late it is, or...
That's a question, so probably... That's kind of a little bit up in the air because that's weather permitting too now, since it took JCPN so long to, to decide what they were gonna do, um, the least we're gonna try and do is see if we can have that guide wire get moved in that hole, um, once that is done, um, that's when, how I'm saying, we try and have the company come out, because naturally, the company that's gonna put the, the piers or pylons in, they have to come out, take a look at what they're gonna be upmached to.
And viruses? Overcharge of that railhead on the Trinity Street?
Well, the part that we're talking about there with, uh, JCPN and stuff, it's right by the rental place across from Quick Check.
Yeah.
Coming off of the hicks when you come down, instead of going through the parking lot, we have to go to the side of the parking lot, in our right of way, which is also a swamp that has various JCPN holes on it, and also, of course, with all the rain, it's, it's got quite a bit of water, very hot a bit of water.
And that JCPN approval doesn't have an expiration date, right?
No.
Okay. Because that would be terrible if they approved and expired at the end of the year.
Well, we're hoping what they should, yes, because what we have to do for them is minimal, they just have to give us a day that they're gonna come out to do what they have to do, and they just want us to put some ground and stuff out there through the truck because of how it is, and after that, then we can go from there.
We're talking about the swamp area right next to the Quick Check?
No, it's across the street, right, right where the rental shack is, right there.
Um, okay, so I had a couple questions, I, comments, compliments, concerns, um, you mentioned that you were starting to pour a lot of concrete, I know that your previous work, your previous professional as a mason, so you were, I'm sure you're leading and training the guys on that, so they're, and you're passing that knowledge along?
Oh, yeah, they've, they've surpassed me.
Have they? That's good, because concrete work costs a lot of money, so, um, that's a great savings, and that's something, if we could do it in-house, that's, that's really good, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, with what we did then, just at the, we probably saved the town eleven thousand dollars just on, and that's just on the concrete work, between tearing it out and placing it, it's a hundred and fifty-eight feet of sidewalk and apron, eight feet wide.
Uh, cost way, I think it cost way more than that.
Well, that's not, that's just for, there, that's not counting materials or anything else like that. Yeah, because, uh, the materials, we were still gonna supply.
Prices are pretty, are pretty high these days, bucktop tractors all around, so, so that's good. Um, I was kinda confused about the three-one-one versus eight-one-one, what goes on, we use the three-one-one... We use the three-one-one system and eight-one-one is the, for everybody's knowledge, is eight-one-one is the call to dig. So, do you have an explanation for that?
The eight-one-one is the program that they actually have for, you go into the mark out area, you adjust their maps, so they know what to call you out for the mark outs. Like before we were, since we have stuff in Sparta and, and over, we're getting called the entire town, I mean, the entire town on both sides. Now, they have their own systems where you go in and customize it to round out the water mains, so we don't get this call from the other end of Sparta.
Where the water mains nowhere near.
Correct.
But you got to go out anyway, you got to fill out paperwork, right?
Correct, so now that that's done, we don't get those mark outs, we don't get charged for those, we should get charged for the mark out too. So we don't get charged for any of that stuff, so we don't, we have less mark outs to deal with, the non-sensibles, so it's just pretty much.
We get charged for the mark out?
I think we pay, yeah, we pay, I don't, it's not much, but we do pay for the mark out.
We pay for the mark out that we're doing.
Yes, exactly, which was confusing to us.
I knew somebody paid for the mark out, I just thought it was, oh, the utility pays for it, obviously, this is the utility.
And the reefer line system, that's our own G I S system.
Facility, yeah.
Yeah, it's called.
Okay, so we got this comprehensive sewer work that was done last year, just culminated a couple of weeks ago. What are your plans for addressing that, unlike, on the items that you can, that you and us, what we can do?
Well, we have not seen the report yet, so...
Which we have a meeting set up on Halloween, the thirty-first, eight, in the morning. They're coming out, they're going to walk through the program, they're going to show us everything on the, on the, on the, so.
What was DPW?
Department of Public Works.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have this jetback truck, I would like to see it utilized more. I don't know how much we do on a more proactive basis, but now that we got this report, we can do, I feel like it's not just responding, we can be knocking out some of these low-lying areas that were flagged. I mean, there wasn't a high percentage of them, but there was certainly enough to, to keep things flowing.
No, actually, Dan, we just started to implement that last year, and then we got this red zone thing, so that kind of put a capstone after that. We were actually going to try and work on, you know, different sections of town each year and try and get X amount of line done each year. That actually, we just started to implement last year, and then when red zone came in, we put a halt to it until after we got their report, because it didn't really make sense on some of it, because we spent a lot of time trying to help them. We did what we could at the same time on our own, as far as trying to be proactive.
Yeah, and you, you can do storm too.
Yes, we do, we do our storm, um, storm pipe and basins every year. We try to get the whole town done. Last couple of years, we've only done certain percentages of the town, but we, we do try to, we use that to flush our basins and our storm pipe, get all the dirt out, everything else like that. And that usually takes about a month to do the whole town.
So we have eighteen employees full-time between the two departments, but just the nature of the work, people get hurt, um, there's obviously unavoidable injuries that have kind of plagued the department for a couple of years. And when I, when I see that, I'm like, you know, I kind of, I'm kind of, then I see the staff go down, and I'm like, oh, man, all these, like, these guys in the summer are so overwhelmed by, like, cutting ball fields and all of this, like, ancillary maintenance stuff, and you only get this, like, six-month window to do roadwork, you know, a good six-month window, and then, you know, we've got so much manpower out of our reduced manpower, we're cutting grass, and that's, so just to me, it's like, I don't want to be cutting grass, I want to be, like, fixing the roads, and I want to be, like, paving more and milling and stuff like that, where, like, grass can be done by anybody. As far as, but your crew can do, you know, we have the equipment, we have the manpower. So as a comment, I would like to see if we can do a workaround, I, maybe hiring more part-time staff to deal with the lawn mowing and using the talented staff. Or identifying specific areas that we really don't have any interest in cutting and subbing it out to a landscaper and seeing, I'd like to know how much they charge for a season, and, you know, we put the specs together and, you know, I, I, just to see, like, the talented guys on, on mower and just rather see them like paving it around.
You know, if you ask them, you said there's talent from the owner.
Yeah, I hear stats we've utilized somehow for, since we have much, yeah. We used to send someone, like, one guy with the summer, just to kind of oversee who's that did it.
So I think that's a budget conversation, right?
Yeah, it's more of a town conversation, but like, I kind of want to, like, know, like, how it's going. I mean, I see the progress reports and the monthly reports, and sometimes it's like, oh, man, like, that's, they're, we're tight on manpower and the grass is growing every seven days. And, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, I was kind of wondering that. I wanted to get your guys' opinion on what you felt if current staffing needs were being met. Not to put you on the spot, but I was just kind of, that was one of the thoughts that popped in mind too, when I was, knew you guys were going to be here.
I'll leave it to you. You're, you know.
Well, I know, but can I contact with Tom?
You always, you always feel like you need more.
Yeah.
Truthfully, we could use, we...
We're, we are hiring one person.
Yeah.
They're, they're getting one new person.
On the, on the DPW side?
Well, I'm gonna, he's got to be DPW side, but any new help that we get is always going to be cross-trained between.
Smart.
Yes, so they're interchangeable, um, and go for that.
And now we deal with, you know, the unintended consequences of, of a good economy and a very competitive construction market in New Jersey. It's hard to find someone that's like, you know, obviously, like, the DPW sometimes for sort of, for like a loader, for an operator, isn't going to pay the same as a, a union or even a private company, so you're, you're competing. And, you know, when the economy wasn't so, so good five or six years ago, people were thinking, you know, I'll go to the more stable town job, but now I'm sure you're running into people like that.
Okay, quick question. Hiring a full-time or are we taking one part-time and moving them to full-time?
No, we're hiring a new full-time.
Oh, so we're going to have nineteen and two PTs?
Correct.
Okay.
So the other thing that I'll mention, um, because I, I don't know that we did, is in addition to preventive work, like the unaccounted water work and things that are, that are happening, I know you guys have been diligent over the last couple of years of incorporating technology, right, kind of e-technology into the work that you're doing. So a couple of times we've mentioned, um, you know, three-one-one, eight-one and some of the systems, but, um, you know, it wasn't that long ago that, uh, we had all of the sewer maps and hydrants, uh, maps on paper and being, being manually maintained, those files being manually maintained. So, um, I know that we appreciate, you know, everyone's, uh, learning of the technology, incorporating it, um, and I think that we've seen that those changes, um, have made a difference and it saves some time, and, you know, we talked about knowledge being passed on, um, that's the easiest way to have, right, you know, all of our, um, seventy-eight miles and four-hundred-and-eighty-seven catch basins and forty miles of storm drains, all that stuff captured electronically. And I think that makes the response sometimes to the leaks and things that happen much better, right, because we can kind of isolate, um, where those zones are and kind of what the, the pipes are coming in, so you kind of know before you open the ground, um, what we're looking at, right? So, um, for whatever it's worth, kind of continuing those trends for sure. And in terms of the, uh, public and knowledge being pushed out, I know, um, Tom and his team do a good job of putting out, you know, the quarterly, um, communications about which streets are being picked up when and which streets, uh, you know, that, you mentioned the brush pickup in May and the leaf pickup in October and the tree pickup in January, so we try to communicate that out to...
And bolt pickup now.
And bolt pickup, pickup, um, out to the residents, so hopefully people are taking advantage of that. And, um, lastly, I'll say thank you in advance for this coming winter, if the current, the whole street gives any indication, let's hope it's not, but, um, I know oftentimes you guys are on the receiving end of those complaints if the streets aren't plowed fast enough. And the presentation tonight hopefully, um, iterates for the public and attendants and those that might be watching tomorrow, moving forward, um, the amount of, of hours and, and work that's put in to get our streets. Hey, the other thing I'll, or plowed, the other thing that I'll say to that is, um, just an awareness that it's not just town roads in town, that we have county roads and we have state roads that, uh, um, the county and the state need to plow when there's a storm. So, um, sometimes I think you guys get really heat for some of those roads when they're not under control, let's say. Other questions or comments?
As far as the stormwater regulations on, um, street sweeping, you really buy, buy the regulations for the, for the tier eight, you only have to sweep them once per month if they're predominantly commercial, less than thirty-five miles an hour. So you don't actually have to sweep all the residential streets on, on a monthly basis if they don't need it, if that releases some manpower, but the commercial streets, they do. But, you know, I still like to see the more frequent...
Did you say under thirty-five mile an hour?
Thirty-five miles an hour under, predominantly commercial, are the ones that need to be swept monthly. If they're not, if they're residential, they don't.
Yeah, because I believe, what is it, ninety-five percent of our roads were under thirty-five miles an hour?
Yeah, predominantly commercial, we kick that into, so you don't need to be sweeping the street in July that doesn't have anything on it that you need a repiling. And I'll show you where that regulation is.
Any other, any other questions or comments for team?
That was pretty clear.
Anything else for us?
I think that's it.
All right. Will you guys be sticking around for our next public portion, just to face those questions? It's next, so. Okay, um, so at this point in the meeting, we'll open the meeting to the second public portion. Anyone wishing to make a comment, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the later.
Mr. Porter, hope on a treat again. I'd like to thank the road company, doing a nice little job. Uh, I know I called them on the one, came by for a laugh, the catch basin there was caving in, they're out there in two days, fixed it, really nice job. I do have a few questions though, for general, general purposes. Number one, are, are we just, is the talent going to start, or do they have plans to start making the curb cuts or handicapped in other areas that don't have, have right now as per, you know, guidelines for the C D A that passed in nineteen ninety-two? Were they not on the plan at all, or what they do there? Number two, there's two burnout buildings right now, one's been burnt out for over seven years now, the one over by Longwood Avenue, Longwood, Longwood Ave., and one on Trinity Street. Is there a way to have them torn down, outlawed by ordinance forever, because those are disasors now, and it's, you know, it's terrible looking, you know, really. Best thing is Firehouse is looking very good, coming up good. And we watch it every day, what can do, and it's looking good. And there was one other one I had, I can't even have. It was about, more, more, I was the last one, that's the one that I have.
So, Mr. Porter, let me, um, ask you a clarified question. Are you saying that you would like the town to tear down the two?
No, I'd like the owners who own the property to tear them down.
Right, so that's part of the issue.
Because it is now, it's a safety issue. If anybody roams on the property, it shouldn't do, it's a safety issue, and also it's an eyesore. I mean, we're having the ordinance to expire properties up, and I'd like to bring them up.
Yeah, it's, the property is condemned, but, um, I'm just talking about the one on lawn, when it's condemned, um, I don't think it's brought up, but there's supposed to be, somebody bought the property, someone's supposed to be doing some, some work to it, I just don't know when that's going to happen.
Yeah, and that was the one in Trinity, that's another one that, you know, the one of, of Hampton Street, right, last winter. And, thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Gammal, there's forty-one comments. Um, regarding the parking again, um, so, um, there's parking problems all over in one of the schools. There's safety issues no matter where you park. Even on West Nelson, um, you have one side of the street where the kids park. The other side, obviously, you have oncoming traffic, you have people turning, go down West Nelson, you get on to Main Street again. So parking is a problem no matter where you go. Again, I think if it's just during school days, school hours, it's not a problem, but to completely have it twenty-four-seven is really unnecessary, because nobody's there, it's, it's an empty street. So I'm not sure, um, I mean, as far as, uh, vehicles, our ambulances, fire, it's, you have that issue all around the high school, no matter when anybody's parked.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you looking into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, we have street light, I don't care. My inquiry minds wanted to know if you guys have any details on the Wizard Con, um, like, how much it would be to attend and things like that.
So what I can tell you is that if you go onto Big Brothers Big Sisters website, um, it is being advertised, and you can purchase tickets on there, and they are even providing a discount for Newton residents. So I don't have the exact pricing in front of you, but I know that I saw it on the website.
That's very helpful, thank you. I had a question about, um, you guys had a resolution tonight about, um, purchasing barricades, emergency barricades. It was, uh, two oh three dash two zero one eight. I was just wondering if they were, or something specific, or if they were just, just because they got a grant and we tried.
Okay, we'll come back to that when you're done, Bill.
Okay. Also, um, I did want to mention, uh, you know, I did have a letter from the code enforcement, um, and I had emailed them on the ninth, and I, I think that one went through, um, and I didn't get a response until the sixteenth, when I called and asked for a response, so, just an FYI. I mean, the guy was very nice and gave me a little bit of an extension because I didn't receive the, uh, the initial letter right away, um, but just wanted to let you know that they left some time there, so. That's all. Thanks.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, we will move on to, uh, council and manager comments, Mr. Russo?
Uh, no, you gave the information on Wizard Con, the guys will take a look at the street light, the barricades are for the police department, that was a request from the chief. And for Mr. Porter, I'm working on a comprehensive sidewalk plan for the town for next year that council's not aware of quite yet, they are now, um, so I'll keep you posted on that as far as ADA and trying to make some of the improvements with the curb cuts and such. That's it.
Okay. Any further?
I don't have anything else.
Comments? You ready? You're good, all right? I don't have anything else either. Um, we have no executive session tonight, um, and so I will entertain a motion to adjourn at eight oh nine.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Councilman Biggio, a second by Deputy Mayor Quinn to adjourn at eight oh nine. All in favor?
Aye.